He's gonna go away and then we're gonna call him back. Alright, I guess we're ready Joe? Good evening, uh, so we can call the, call to order and roll call?
Weedman?
Aye.
Brayden?
Here.
McCroy?
Here.
Mackey?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Strack?
Here.
Okay, we have an establishment of the forum. Sitting up here with all my friends. So, next is the approval of the agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Miller? Yes? Strack?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
McCroy?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
Okay, next we're, we are varying off a little bit on our agenda to recognize two of our eighth grade students for their achievements in this year's athletics. Mr. Smith?
We are waiting on one of those students, so we'll probably start with one or two of them this year. So, good evening, thank you so much for letting us steal a little bit of your time tonight. Um, my only job tonight is to be here just to introduce two of our Grayslake Middle School staff members. I have Mrs. Elena Armada, who is the Frederick and GMS track coach and also cross-country head coach. And I also have Mr. Coffey, Kevin Coffey, who is back there. He is also, and there's three schools that come together for our wrestling team, so it's a Frederick Park and GMS wrestling team that we have. The two of them came to me early this week with an idea that we obviously kinda threw together very quickly, which again is the reason for the thank you to steal a little time tonight, about celebrating some students that we have had this year that have done some pretty remarkable things with their co-curricular activities. So, without further ado, I am going to introduce Mrs. Armada.
Hi, everyone, so tonight we are honoring Kayden Smith. Kayden Smith is a two-year track athlete for me. He is our state champion in pole vault, and what's really special about that is he has only been doing the sport for just about thirteen months. So, up in the north, we don't have a lot of pole vault facilities as they do in the, pretty much in the south, like Bloomington. So, uh, we came up with the idea of starting pole vault last year, and he was kind of one of our first kids to do it. Last year, he made it down to state, so he is a two-time state qualifier. And it was actually one year exactly where last year he placed twenty-third, and he jumped seven-nine, and this year he actually became the state champion with a jump of twelve-three, which is incredible for the age. And we're just really proud of him, and he, out of all the kids I had this year, he was, he'd be done with me and then he'd go and do his own thing, so it's truly, it's, it's all him. So, we just wanna come up and congratulate Kayden for state champion, and it is the first boys' Grayslake Middle School state champion for track and field. So, he is your first boys' state champion. And then he will actually be, next year they're gonna be excited, because he will be at Grayslake North, and he will, potential football? Looking football, but mostly wrestling and track and field, so that's where his two, I think, passions really are. So, we just wanna say thank you for honoring him tonight.
Thank you, nice job. Congratulations.
It's kinda cool, 'cause I know that guy too, he's a wrestler of mine as well, so. Well, um, thanks for, thanks for your patience with me tonight, so I'm a, you know, a full-time dad, and wife works the night shift, so the kids come with, so, you know, thanks for being so kind to them. And, uh, my name's Kevin Coffey, and I'm the head wrestling coach here at GMS, but again, as Mr. Smith had said, that also includes Park and Frederick Campus, so we're a five-through-eight program. I'll come over to the middle, it's kinda weird I'm over there. Um, and, so we've, uh, we've actually had a very successful program in the last couple of years. We've had six state champions, uh, in the last five years, I believe, and three of those were Kramers. So, um, but the particular Kramer I wanna call up here tonight is Mr. Aaron Kramer, so Aaron, come on up, please. So, Aaron, Aaron is a really cool young man, I've gotten to know him very well, 'cause the first year I started coaching, he was a fifth grader, and I think Aaron would definitely agree with me, as well as his parents with it, Aaron has come a long way, he really has. Not just as an athlete, 'cause he's been, he's actually been a four-time state qualifier, um, but he has stepped up in leadership, and he really has grown as an individual, and he's, uh, he's a wrestler that I have really enjoyed coaching these last four years. I've been so proud of you, Aaron, and I've been proud of the growth you've, you've made, not just as a wrestler, and you know me, that, that comes very second to me, but as a young man. And you have become a great young man that these kids look up to, and, you know, I didn't wanna tell you at the time, but I just knew that this was your year. I, I just knew it was your year, I couldn't tell you that, okay? But, uh, you know, when we got down to state, there was a whole different demeanor about Aaron, he knew exactly what he had to do, and, you know, right at the beginning of regionals, um, you know, wrestling's a unique sport, there's a lot of discipline off the mat, you know, keeping your weight under control, and staying disciplined, putting the right fuel in the body, and, uh, we had a little bit of a struggle there, right? Aaron, we, uh, Aaron was a little nervous about making weight, and he worked really hard, and he did all the right things, he did it the right way. Um, and he is, uh, like I said, he's a four-time state qualifier, he, uh, has numerous conference championships and regional and sectional championships, and this was the big one for him, this is the one that he really deserved, uh, and that was that state title, so, uh, one, was it four matches downstate, I believe? Help me out a little bit. See, see what I have to deal with here? No, but yeah, he, and, uh, no, he was, again, he just showed great prowess, great, great control on the mat, and, um, again, was a great, just a great example of, of how far he's come in terms of his coachability, and, uh, he's been a pleasure to coach, and I've enjoyed every minute of it, so, um, Aaron, anything you wanna say?
No.
Man, a few words, so. Um, but on behalf of the wrestling program, uh, I wanna say thank you so much for letting us come here and talk about our program. Uh, we've had a very successful program, Aaron has been a huge part of that, and Kayden has as well, which is kinda cool that they're both here, and, uh, to look forward to a lot more successful seasons with you guys, so thank you so much.
Next is, uh, public comments, did we have anybody signing? Uh, next will be board reports. Anybody have any exciting news?
I have a lot of news. Um, I was able to go to the bilingual parent summit with Stephanie Diaz and some other parents, which was amazing. It was really fun to sit through it, and I had two primary takeaways, the first was a call to civic engagement, I engaged, I went to three sessions, and that came through every single session, which was fantastic to hear. Um, and they, over and over, I heard this call that links past, present, and future. What they said was, "We want, uh, to be, engage in servant leadership in a way that honors our history, our God, and our children." And I thought that was just a really neat, uh, way to think about civic engagement. Um, and then also started just playing with ideas about how technology could be used in community engagement, what kind of professional development we want, might want. Um, because the pack I had, I had a translation pack, 'cause some of the keynotes, or the keynote was in Spanish, and I had, one of the earbuds was broken, and then when the translator put his phone, it was a signal interrupted, so every now and then I would get this blast of noise, and have to rip it out of my ears and try to, to listen to what was going on, but that was, just made me start thinking about where the intersect of technology and community engagement is. Also attended Meadowview's Woodland Days yesterday for about five minutes, and the kids were doing a project-based learning unit where they were creating the drain, because apparently a bunch of water washes the path out, so they were all making the drain, and it's gonna be a rock garden, and it's solving a real problem, so that was really neat. And the last thing is, I attended a League of Women Voters, just drinks and discussion about EBF, which I know some of us have been trying to learn more about, um, evidence-based funding, and that was really interesting. Um, and the thing I thought you might be interested in is they're doing a workshop for anyone who wants to learn Google Docs, so that we can have one place where people can access articles, and there's been some back and forth with whether you wanna pass the fair tax or not, so just to look at how it intersects with evidence-based funding, it's kinda neat, so. Oh, and Ralph Martyris coming back on June 3rd, if you wanna know more about that, he'll be at Warren Township High School.
Where at?
Warren, Ingrini.
Um, I attended the art show, and I think it was before the last meeting, so I apologize that I wasn't here, at Meadowview, and one of the things I loved was that it was global, and there were, and all the countries were not, none of the countries were European countries, there was Mexico, China, and India, so I thought it was a really cool global representation that kinda gets out of the usual box of what we think of as international, and it was very, very well done, so. It's really fun to walk around and see all the amazing creations, and then to take some home. My third grader.
Where was it?
It was at Meadowview.
At Meadowview.
Yeah.
The only thing I have is, I have a note from Ellen that we are to let everyone know that we reviewed the closed minute, minute, closed session minute meetings, um, and that they are not going to be released, most of that is due to employee salaries, that type of discussions, so.
I would say we'll use the outdoor band concert at Frederick, and, which was fantastic, and it's always a good venue, and it's amazing how many parents and community members show up, so it's a very great outdoor venue, for one, and just the amount of engagement there, and then right after that, I sped over to the high, or Central for their band concert. Um, and half the kids I'd seen at Frederick perform probably four or five years ago, and just the progression, uh, and musicality and stuff, it was fantastic, so, very fun.
Uh, next is the superintendent report, which we have Paul standing in today.
Yes, so thank you for allowing me a few minutes, Mrs. Crowell sends her apologies for not being here tonight, she had an important thing to take care of. Just a few things, tomorrow, Mrs. Crowell is going to be the guest conductor, um, with the GMS band, she's been practicing her conducting skills every day, I think I know some of the music fairly well. She's with the highest, the highest level band, and she's a little bit nervous because they are very, very good. And they're counting on her to direct at the right moment for the right sounds. Just, um, to echo about the wrestling and the, um, track and field, last week was state meets for track, we had, um, both Park and GMS represented there well, we had lots of, um, students participating, um, and they did very well, we, we did have a state champion, which is pretty amazing, um, in pole vault. This coming Friday is a half-day, and so it's records day for teachers, so they'll be working on, um, all of the end-of-the-year reports, documents, getting ready for report cards, all kinds of things, so they have a busy afternoon planned. I also had wanted to talk about the bilingual parent advisory summit, um, so the parent bilingual, um, summit, as Christie was able to go. Um, this was the third year that Dr. Diaz had been able to arrange parents to go, um, there were six parents, people, six people, um, parents who also went. And so they said it was a very, very crowded experience, but the parents had an amazing, fabulous time. Um, and it is interesting that they have, um, so many of the sessions in multiple languages, our parents were all Spanish-speaking, I believe, generally, um, but they were thrilled to get information, that whole civics idea is really coming through with the, um, social science standards, because social science has focused, one of their areas is civics engagement and being a, um, community partner and all those things, and so we are beginning to make strides for that, um, in our curriculum as well. I think Amanda and I both wanted to share, because we, I get to talk, I get to talk curriculum a little bit, but Amanda and I have gotten so many, um, notes of appreciation and, um, kind words about the board's decision about the curriculum adoptions, and so they're very excited that we have a plan. Um, Amanda has been doing amazing, incredible work, um, because we already have, um, training scheduled for the beginning of next year. We, um, actually have some trainings, um, the last week of school when eighth grade kids are finished, but staff aren't, so we're using some of those days for some training to prepare for next year. Um, staff have been very, very appreciative that we have the new materials coming, and that, um, we have a PD plan associated with it too, so, which is really good. Um, since our last meeting, I wanted to just compliment our staff, we had our last late start, um, and the teachers have worked incredibly hard this year to continue our work of a guaranteed and viable curriculum, working on assessments, making revisions where we need to. We're talking about rigor, we're talking about, um, appropriate assessment strategies, um, the teams have really grown over the years, and this particular year, we've done very, very good work, and so I just wanted to publicly thank all of the teachers on their job likes because of the work that they're, they've been doing. Um, again, uh, right before our meeting, um, we were asked, "Oh, is this the slow, you're so, you know, it's so good that it, things are slowing down?" Um, and actually, in our world, this is very, very busy time, because we're trying to finish out all the things that we have going on, but we're also in full plans of institute days for next year, and curriculum adoptions and changes, and so it's very, very busy, and so it's not, we're at the end of the year and things can slow down, so it's, we're picking right up, right now, where, where things are getting really busy, so thank you.
Okay, next is a motion to, I need a motion to approve the consent agenda. Second.
Brayden?
Aye.
Mackey? McCroy?
Aye.
Strack?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Can I ask you a quick question about the minutes from the last meeting? Um, I noticed the, there was a list of committees, but I didn't see the diversity committee on that list, did you guys talk? Diversity committee membership?
I don't remember.
At all? No. Okay.
Is that one we missed?
Yeah. I don't know, I, yeah. I just wanna make sure we were open about if other board members wanna serve on it.
Yeah.
Yeah, definitely.
Yeah, I think we just talked about ones that we, we had vacancies coming.
Okay. Alright, that's fine, I just wanna make sure it wasn't a.
Anybody's welcome, uh, you know, really what you're trying to get to is, everybody's, anybody's welcome to join the diversity committee too, if you, if you would like.
The more the merrier, come and join us. When do you meet, Christie? You meet on, uh, the Wednesday, like, basically in between, or after the second board meeting of the month, Paul?
It's typically the first Wednesday
Oh.
of the month, if it's not a board meeting, so it's the early Wednesday of the month.
Yeah.
Um, likelihood, we're, one of our first agenda items will be to potential change our name, as well.
Yeah.
Um, because we want a more, a broader
Up to date.
Up to date, that, those terms continue to evolve and change, so I know that will be one of the things that we'll be looking for. Equity, or, you said, or something, it'll probably be a change in there, you know what I'm talking about?
I do.
Working on that, but it's typically that Wednesday, but, um, if we have new members, we, you know, as the new year starts, we usually start the year with, "What's the best date for everyone?", does that continue to work?
Yeah, I think we only have meetings scheduled for the summer at this point, so. What time do you think they'll? Six. At night?
Sorry, I think I threw that up anyways. I skipped the committee reports. That's probably why you were looking at me like I'm strange.
Well, no, I actually had looked at the minutes and realized I had just said "I" but not asked that question, so.
So, there is a diversity committee on June 12th at 6:00 PM at Frederick.
Yeah.
Is there anything else for the committees?
The engagement, we have a meeting Fourth, great, who's with me? Oh, Stephen.
Stephen's here, please.
It's, um, June 4th, so we'll have something for you.
Sorry, messed that up. Okay, I get good at it by year two. Uh, next on the agenda are action items, um, these are, uh, agenda items are, will be voted on by the board, we've discussed them before in the past. Uh, the first one is a motion to approve the Durham transportation contract for fiscal year nineteen-twenty with a six percent increase. John, any comments on that?
Uh, one board member had some requests for some additional information, you'll see a memo from Ms. Crowell giving that data to you guys, uh, to the board, excuse me. The only other notes I wanted to share were some recent news that we received, uh, one piece was, apparently we're lucky to only have six percent, we just received word from one not neighboring school district, but a, a nearby school district that had a forty-nine percent increase in their transportation when they went out to bid, so we're feeling somewhat fortunate to be on the lower end of the spectrum of transportation renewals. Um, Durham also let us know that they also recently lost a bid to, um, a separate company for Fremont, and, uh, while I feel bad for Durham for that, that's actually a win for the district, because that frees up school buses and all of that additional staff, some of the concerns that they had were trying to get more bus drivers in. So now they have a whole district's worth of bus drivers that they're gonna continue to employ, so we should see even better, uh, on-time rates and, uh, better service overall because of the sudden boon of school bus drivers.
I'll make the motion.
Miller?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
McCroy?
Aye.
Strack?
Aye.
And we did put in, under, you should've gotten a copy of what, um, John had asked for, from Durham, the information that he was looking for.
I apologize, one other thing I wanted to mention as well is, we're gonna start working this next year, um, one of the goals, I think, for our leadership team is gonna try to do some of this data collection in-house as well, so we'll have some, we'll have Durham, Durham's numbers that they were gracious enough to provide, but we'll also have some internal data, starting next year, to track some of this performance on our own as well.
Um, next we have a motion to approve the updated board agreements.
Can I just ask a question?
On the board agreements?
The board agreements, yeah. One of the board agreements is that we're, we have to call Ellen if we wanna visit a school that our child doesn't attend. Can we just amend it a little bit, that if we can, if we're invited, we don't, I was invited to go to Woodland Days at the last minute, so if I had had to call her and connect with her, then I'm, I'm guessing, the story I'm telling myself is that the reason that's in there is because some bitch is, we don't want anyone going to go to the school.
More to deal with uninvited?
Right, that's why.
Trips, not necessarily, you mean, you were invited to go?
Well, I was invited by another parent, I wasn't invited by Laura, so.
I don't think that was a problem, but, that's my opinion. Were you there in your capacity as a board member? Or as a parent?
I wasn't, I don't have children there, so I was just.
Did you visit that other school in the capacity as a board member? Doesn't sound like it.
If you're just there as, as a parent.
I didn't have my name tagged on.
As a guest, yeah. Yeah, I don't think you did anything.
Looked around, thought it was amazing, so.
Yeah, the idea was, the idea was so that, you know, if you were gonna go and visit a school, that Ellen knew that you were in the, in the school, because usually you're taking up time of staff to be showing around and stuff like that. You were there for, you weren't there on official board capacity, you were just there as a visitor.
No, I think I was there six minutes. And you weren't taking up, like, resources, or, you know? I don't think so. I think that's probably the intent, is that someone's gotta be there to escort you and answer, but if it's an event, it feels like it's It's open to the, I mean, I don't know.
Lynn, since you're coming in next year, do you have preference?
Well, actually, what I'm thinking about is if there could be other reasons why that is in place, and maybe this could be something that we can talk about with our facilitator, we will, we will together in the, the work. I mean, yes, we can leave, uh, the standard as it currently is, and it seems like we might be talking about all of those, all of these kind of units at that time, so, that's, that's what we need as well.
Can we always update it again?
I don't, it's not a mountain I wanna die on.
Yeah, I know, I didn't think he did, but he made it wrong, but. I need a, a motion to approve?
Second. McCroy?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
Strack?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
Okay, and next is a motion to approve John Heron as CSBO, the CSBO, as the school treasurer, this is an annual, um, appointment that we do every year for the CSBO. Kind of standard. So moved.
Strack?
Aye.
Brayden?
Aye.
McCroy?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Uh, next I need a motion to approve the treasurer's bond in the amount of thirteen thousand dollars, um, this is a required annual insurance that covers the district against fraud. So moved.
Second. Brayden?
Aye.
Strack?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
McCroy?
Aye.
Weedman?
Aye.
Mackey?
Aye.
Okay, now we are up to unfinished business, with the first item being an update on the Hager abatement. It'll be John again.
So, we received word on, uh, I believe Monday or Tuesday this week, that District 127's board, um, had met to discuss the Hager situation, and as a board, they have, uh, decided to let the village know formally, they let them know today, uh, that District 127 will not be moving forward with any uh, form of abatement or agreement for Hager Electric. Um, their argument, you'll see is, uh, from the letters that all of you were provided, is that all of the options either had a long-term negative impact, in their opinion, um, and that negative impact had, uh, an impact outside of just the village of Grayslake, and they felt like they could not, in good conscience, make six other villages bear the burden of Grayslake's decisions. They also had some concern with the precedential effect of making such an agreement, they wanna be a good neighbor, but, uh, they can't afford to put funding at risk in this situation, so. Uh, their full letter is, is in front of you, that has gone to the village, um, today. That's the latest update on it, we haven't done anything internally, uh, as we're still trying to assess, and obviously for the board's, um, decision on what to do with this new piece of information.
Um, well, I, I think District 127 is, um, almost taken the ball over hands at this point, their, that's, that was their decision, and I think that was all part of the overall package for the village, the village was looking to do, so really it's, kinda falls back to the village of what their next steps are gonna be on us. I don't think there's much for us to even do at this point, until the village comes back with a counterproposal, or a, a change. I don't know how much more time we need to discuss it, as even, even putting an effort into it from the administration-type side of it, because it's probably dead in the water right now. Me, it's a little disappointing, 'cause I don't wanna see a business leave town, but, you know, I'm not quite sure, and all the reasons after reading through it, uh, they came up with their information, but, you know, they're financial people, I'm, I'm not. At this point, I think we just kinda let it go until we hear anything back from the village, that's my opinion.
I would agree with that, what, what would your recommendation be at this point, John? Just knowing everything that we know now, and what, what 127 has decided to do.
At this point, looking at the financials of the agreement, we would have, I, I can't see a way financially, if we were to try to bear the burden ourselves of trying to create a financial incentive strong enough to keep Hager, um, I, I mean, we'd be talking decades of taxes, of tax abatements to try to get something that would still allow Hager to stay, let alone if we were in a position where only we were doing, or doing something to agree with Hager to get them to stay, um, I think that would put District 127 in an awkward position, although you can also argue District 127 put us in an awkward position with the village, because now we, we kind of are, are tied very much to 127 in this case, just because we're the two biggest taxing bodies for Hager. Um, at this point, it, it will just have to be, I think, hearing what the village At this point, it will just have to be, I think, hearing what the village comes back with, and if they can get anything from 127 to get them to reconsider. But at this point, financially, I just don't see a way that we could come up with a package that would be strong enough to keep Hager. Any questions?
Well, actually, one question I have is should we, should the district also send a letter to the village? Outlining whatever the decision is, you know? If not, that's fine, just in case.
I think we're just kind of hanging low at this point. We can, if we want, we can try and draft a letter, or we can draft a letter stating that, you know, due to 127's decision, we are waiting to hear from next steps from the village of Gray's Lake, and kind of really push it back to the village, because there's no sense in us making, I mean, there's no way we're going to come up with a 127 package that, you know, who's going to make up 127's portion, that wouldn't be fair to anybody.
I think sending a letter of any kind makes it sound like we're waiting for the village to come back with something that we, and I don't think that that's necessarily a foregone conclusion of the board, that we're eager to provide such incentives. So I think probably doing nothing is better than doing that letter.
I mean, unless the letter is along the same lines as the high school district, saying that we're not going to do it, which, in my opinion, that's what we should do, but barring that, then yeah, we just not...
We can just let it rest at this point. If they want to make contact with us, they will, so... Any other comments?
Discuss policy for future times of this?
We're still going to work on a policy in case this comes up again. So that was part of the policy committee, was going to work on coming up with a format of how this should go down in the future.
I think we said in meeting day, didn't we? End of June, I think.
So, yes, we're going to work on something.
So does that include talking to the library and the park district, library and park district? Bodies and bodies in this, or no?
You mean, as far as what our procedures would be?
Yeah, and that might be a dumb question, but just, is it, it feels like, just like 127 and 46 are the largest taxing bodies, but we shouldn't make decisions without smaller taxing bodies. I think by the library and the park district.
And the fire. And fire. Fire?
Fire.
Well, I think each taxing body makes, I mean, they make their own decision, so it's all independent.
Did Hager go to those other bodies or not?
They went to the village, and the village came to the, all the taxing bodies to try and work a package. Then each taxing body was supposed to, each taxing body was supposed to come up with a scenario that would work for them. We were fairly close to being on the same page with the 127. Park District was where, we had a meeting, Park District, 127, the fire district, the village, and us, and they kind of laid everything out. We went through a lot of discussions about stuff, and then the, John and, I forget your counterpart at 127.
Mike Zalik.
Mike Zalik, we're going to work together to kind of look at formulas and how to make it work.
Just to add a small piece to that, my sense was, and Mr. Weedman can correct me if I'm wrong, it basically came down to what did District 127 and District 46 want to do? Because at the end of the day, I know, for example, the Park District, it was, would have been a fifteen hundred dollar issue for them. So in some senses, it was so small, most of them were looking to us and District 127 for, obviously, this is tens of thousands of dollars to you, so why don't you tell us what you need to do, and we can kind of sign along with what you were going to go with? So, I think that's why you've seen a lot less conversation about other taxing bodies. Most of them seem to be more interested in what we and District 127 are going to do, because we had the biggest, we had the most skin in the game, so to speak.
Yeah, and the fire district, when they had their meeting, they discussed it, and they said they'll wait to see what the school districts do. They were on board with however it went, but they were just going to wait. Any other questions on Hager?
Okay.
Next one is an update on Arbor breakfast concerns.
I'm going to pass around a package of some of the different... Yeah, I was feeling a little hungry earlier, but I was able to restrain myself. So I just wanted to bring some of the different food items that are served there to pass around, so you had an idea of some of the things that they offer. And the reason why I wanted to bring those is I found some of the pieces of information that they shared by showing me the packaging to be pretty compelling, so while that's going around, I'll run through some of this. The first concern was proteins for breakfast. How can we increase the number of proteins that we're serving during breakfast? And any nutritionist would tell you your top two, well, at this point, we don't have the facilities at all the buildings to serve a hot breakfast, so we can only really have cold breakfasts for a lot of the buildings. In light of that, there's really only two high-protein cold food options, and that's a hard-boiled egg and peanut butter. And unfortunately, we as a district have made a decision, due to the severity and the frequency of egg and peanut allergies, not to serve those food items. That being said, we said that there has to be other options, and the two that Arbor brought up were cheese sticks, and one of the packings in there is sun butter, which is made from sunflower seed oil to add to the menu and to increase the frequency that they serve them. They cautioned us that they're not usually in high demand in the mornings, but that doesn't mean they're not willing to set those out and let parents encourage their children to make better choices in the morning. Because they want to make the offering available, it still has to be, though, the kid has to grab it, so that's kind of where we're at with proteins in the morning, unfortunately. For sugars, I know that was a big concern as well, so they made a couple of interesting initial points. I mentioned the twenty-five grams of sugar. They pointed out that the twenty-five grams is added sugar, and the reason why that's such an important distinction is because if you get a carton of milk and an apple, which we all would agree is a pretty healthy breakfast, that's actually twenty-six grams of sugar already. So, the hard part right now is the way the laws are structured. A lot of food packaging doesn't require you to report how much is a naturally occurring sugar versus how much is an added sugar. So, in light of that, they've pointed to the Federal Register, which is the guideline of everything food service related in the schools, and the Federal Register says that if you serve food, it has to be no more than thirty-five percent sugar by weight. And she walked me through a list of some of their food items, and the highest one I found was twenty-four percent, and that was our donuts. So we are not only meeting, we're far surpassing the sugar requirements from the federal government on how much sugar we can serve at breakfast.
These requirements are part and parcel of the lunch program?
Correct.
Okay, so they're not really constructed for nutritional reasons, they're constructed for adherence to the program. I guess the underpinning rationale might be, you know, some sort of cursory tip of the cap to nutrition, but that doesn't, that's not very compelling to me.
Fair enough. They also mentioned and shared some points of things like the Journal of Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics, and the National Academy of Sciences that talked about different guidelines that they have for sugar. For example, the Journal of Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics also mentioned, sugar should not exceed twenty-five percent of total energy. So, they feel like they're, they're trying to do more than just what the federal government is requesting. Arbor has a full-time nutritionist on staff that's trying to juggle what the federal guidelines say is permissible, and trying to keep up to date with things like anything that comes out of the Academy of Nutrition and Dietetics, and other things that are coming around for nutrition, especially for younger kids. Their focus right now is more on calories, which I think we can all agree is not the best way, but unfortunately, we don't have a lot of packaging requirements to show things like how much of this is added sugar versus naturally occurring sugar. So they have, the only, one of the only standards that they can use to go off is really calories, and that's what they try to hold to in terms of how many calories they serve at breakfast and at lunch. Speaking of donuts, because there's donuts in there, another thing that they wanted to mention. There were donuts in the lunch.
There are donuts in the lunch.
Fine, sounds good. They also wanted to point out that one of the misnomers about food services, what gets served in the school doesn't match necessarily what you see in a grocery store. So for example, their donuts that are here are completely different than what you would see in a grocery store for donuts. They have a lot more higher contents of whole wheat grains and lower contents of sugar than you would see in the donuts that you can buy in the grocery store. They also, what I found was particularly compelling is they put in front of me a Cocoa Puffs cereal bar, which again, I restrained myself, and a chewy granola bar. And what was interesting to me is, as I read through the packaging, and they walked me through it, but I, I could see it, it was, the Cocoa Puffs bar actually had no saturated fat, one gram more fiber, one gram more protein, three less grams of sugar, and ten less calories than the granola bar. So some of this, even though it's packaged with the kid-friendly Cocoa Puffs title, they're still doing things to make those things more nutritional than you might even have expected before. So even as you look at the picture of the Cocoa Puffs bar, it's not all Cocoa Puffs, it's, there's a lot of granola and a lot of oats in it as well, so some of it's just finding a creative way to get kids to go, ooh, Cocoa Puffs! But really, there's, we're sneaking in whole wheats and oatmeal and other things in there as well. And all of that to say, I think I've done a fair job of explaining it. She gave me a stack of about half, half a book of nutritional guidelines, and showing me some of the discrepancies depending upon which, which academy you want to go with. But she also mentioned, this is a lot of information for even me to digest, no pun intended. So they said that they're also more than willing to come out at any point and have a more in-depth conversation about nutrition in the schools and the process that they go through. They've only requested if there was specific concerns that they, if you wanted more information about sugars, she can come in and speak more about sugars, but if you had more questions, she's more than happy to come to a board meeting and address whatever specific concerns you have. Or give a general presentation if that's what you guys wanted as well, if that's what the board wanted as well.
Answer the questions that we had?
I'm not sure if that member of the public would be satisfied with. I don't know, I know who that member of the public is. Proteins in the breakfast, right? Obviously, you can't serve a hot breakfast at every school, it's just, it's not practical. What other ideas are there for cold proteins besides cheese sticks? Is that the only one basically that come up, and the sun bar?
That's the best one that they had to offer in terms of what had high quantities of protein, unfortunately. Like I said, they would love to serve like a hard-boiled egg or something, but that was actually more of a district decision than a nutritionist's decision, so...
There have to be other foods, though, that are cost-effective and that can be sold cold, like yogurt, or, and not the really sugary yogurt. There have to be some other options that are cost-effective and... Sorry, you and Heather are both laughing at something else? What?
I apologize, we also talked about yogurt, and I think they said they serve yogurt once a week, and their response was, is it's not really another, it's one of those, again, not a high-demand item, unfortunately. But again, and that's the other thing I want to clearly communicate on their behalf as well, they're interested in designing whatever we want to talk about in terms of nutrition. So if we came to them and said, okay, serve yogurt five days a week, that's something that, they're not, they're not going to say, no, we're not going to do it. But they want to have that dialogue and make sure that we're getting something that both, we can guarantee that the kids get something, because if we serve the healthiest of foods, I really hate to say this, if we serve the healthiest of foods, I think you'll find more kids going without anything than if they got something that was not the optimal nutrition.
I think they did some research about that and showed that that, it's counterintuitive.
I remember you mentioning that.
Yeah, but it didn't happen in the schools that were offering healthier options, the waste didn't, it wasn't increased. I don't know what food items, I don't know if that was hot lunch or hot breakfast or cold breakfast, but...
Is it just related to waste, or?
It was related, I have to go back and find the study, but it was after the nutrient content was, the guidelines were relaxed, I think in two seventeen, I think, maybe it was before that. When they were more stringent, they did some research to see if the waste would increase, and that research showed that while the heavier, the stricter requirements were in place, the waste did not increase. It might just be maybe picking out some of the, the higher sugar options and not giving so many options. I mean, I know that works at home. If you pair it with something they do like, but there's less of, there's just not as many Cocoa Puffs, and even if it is a higher, whatever the thing is, but, and you pair it with something that is more healthy, then they associate it together and they eat more of the healthy. It might not be, it might just be decreasing the quantity of the high-sugar stuff and increasing sun butter and... I don't know what the answer is, but I share the, I think we all do, and we don't want our kids eating garbage, and we don't want kids walking into school without a nurse.
I wonder, I wonder if they're interested in trying things out, if we try for two weeks to have yogurt every day, and keep, keep some data for two weeks beforehand with only yogurt once a day, once a week, and then do it for two weeks where it's offered every day, and see... If there's a difference or such, because I know, when I've been in the schools, it all depends what the kid takes, and so, that's what you're talking about, if we're reducing some of the options. It's just, that to me sounds like an action research project pretty easily...
Yeah.
Designed to just offer more yogurt and see if the, if the takers, they're taken more often. That doesn't seem like that would be a difficult assessment for them to see the numbers for a short amount of time, just to see if there was a difference.
You know, in college, we ate cold pizza that had vegetables on it, and so maybe if we offered hummus and vegetables, and just see what they take.
And to be clear, again, I want to credit Arbor for this. One of the things is when we said we wanted more proteins, that's actually an idea that they had, was we'll, we'll start offering cheese sticks and sun butter every day, and we'll see, we'll try it out over the next couple of weeks and come back with feedback. So, I want to say again that they're more than interested in trying to find and test and do whatever we want in terms of addressing and adjusting our nutrition.
If you offer cheese sticks and sun butter next to powdered donuts, you will not have a good adoption rate on your cheese sticks and sun butter, I'm guessing. I guess, the bottom line for me is that I know, I wouldn't feel like a very good parent if I put these powdered, and I looked at the label again, I wouldn't feel like a very good parent if I put these powdered donuts in front of my children every day. So I think we could try to do better than what we're doing for kids who take the breakfast. I think restricting the options and seeing what happens might be a way to go, because I bet that the people who need to utilize this breakfast would eat something, you know, just a little bit more nutritious, but not if they're, they have the option to pick the, say.
Yeah, that's, those are the exceptions, rather. We offer more yogurt and fruit for breakfast, things like that, and maybe a couple of things on that side.
Or once, maybe a quarter, other donuts once a week.
Right.
Yeah.
Maybe a Friday, that's typically the fun stuff.
They are currently, it's, correct, it's not, those aren't all there every single day.
May I?
Absolutely.
In a building with the highest view, it's not, other than, you build them with donuts. They're giving the donuts, they're giving them to the post-charge, and they're pouring a couple of donuts in the post-charge, because I think all of them, for a while, there was only so much that they allowed, but part of them are covered. But it's not just...
So twenty-five plus twenty-five plus twenty-five is seventy-five, is what I'm sure.
Which is why they got to the, the point of how much sugar per, by weight, is part of their argument.
Be given, and yogurt is a high sugar, if you need to move towards a low sugar yogurt, and cheese sticks, cheese sticks used to fly off the shelf, when they had them, and they're good for that. So, and see if there's a need and there is it, and they're not, their take is something that we're going to, because they have to be, they're going to live it, and they're going to live it every month. If we could maybe do a little bit better and have slower burning libraries, and if we can kind of, and tell them that if we, if we're talking about these donuts and these Cocoa Puffs, if they're similar to, somebody to, as I can imagine.
I appreciate the thinking.
It's a good point, too, because it probably increases their dental bills and not being facetious. I have a friend who runs a not-for-profit for that, so there's horrible dental issues with, with that consumption. So it's not just the, it's not just showing up during the day, right? Because there's other issues beyond just...
Well, we want to ask them to, school's almost over for the year, beginning of the year, next year, switch some of this up to, you know, as Chris has suggested, the cheese sticks and lower-sugar yogurts and kind of work some of those in less than what we are currently doing. And try a trial period, you know, at the beginning of the year, next year, you know, for the first month, first four weeks of school, and then we can kind of compare what's, how it's going.
I'd be interested to know what options there are that are higher protein, lower sugar, regardless of what we think adoption would be. I'd be interested in a list like that, like what's possible in that category. And then, I mean, like Mr. Wilk said, cheese sticks flew off the shelves when they were offered before. I'd rather they eat a cheese stick than anything in this bag, personally.
Well, maybe a way we can approach it is more to define the nutritional targets we need from the food and then let vendors come up with the solutions. We can say, "All right, you know, this is the target sugar amount, this is the target protein", and kind of provide that guidance, and then let them be creative in how they solve it. Or we can make it a kids' project, they can do it and help us. Their own breakfast.
Should we have them come in and share information?
I don't think we have to talk to Sean. I mean, that way John doesn't feel like he's combing three inches of studies.
I feel, I mean, this is one of those times where we're the customer, right? It's more important, I, I wholeheartedly agree, it's more important that we get something that's nutritional and healthy for the kids. And I, I like Mr. LaCroix's comment of like, "Let's worry about sales after we worry about how do we design a better breakfast." So I'm happy to start having some of those conversations and share some of the things that we've set here tonight. I will ask them to come to a future board meeting. It sounds like there's interest for that.
I'd say probably sometime in July, if possible. Because that gives us time to then make any changes for coming into the school year.
They might have to make some changes sooner than that because of the commodities, again, the wonderful Department of Defense and their handling of fruit and vegetables. So they're already filing for some of that stuff for next year now. So I'm going to go ahead and have them at least start looking at increasing the quantities of, that they're ordering for those things and decreasing the quantity of some of these other things. And we can always figure out later how that plays out. But I, I want to get them, I'll have them come in in July, but I will start having them implement some of the suggestions that we've come up with tonight so that we can start trying these things out.
Any other questions or follow-up you want John to do?
I'll have the taste test of donuts to tell you if there's any difference.
Please do.
And put them on Amber's pillow.
Okay, so next is an update on the Park Campus Traffic Study.
So I love discussions like this because this one seems like the solution might be a lower cost to the district. And I'm always a fan of low cost to the district.
Can, can you just briefly give the history so that Sean and Christine know what we're talking about to begin with?
Absolutely. So we've had an issue out at Park where as parents start queuing, especially in the mornings, it seems like, but even in the afternoons. Townline Road, which Park sits on, becomes a traffic nightmare and arguably a very dangerous area as parents who, or local community members who are trying to get from Townline out to, what's the big road? Cedar Lake, thank you. They don't want to sit in a queue for a school that they don't have kids in, so they'll try to pass them and go around them in a middle lane, and it becomes a kind of a scary and a dangerous situation. So we were asked by the previous board to contract with Erickson Engineering. They helped us with our Frederick Bus Lot, and they have a full-time traffic engineer on staff. So we contracted with them to come out to Park and to the middle school to just look at the flow of traffic and look at the flow of our parking lots and see if there's a way that we can better address some of these parking issues or some of the traffic flow issues so that we won't have cars backing up out onto Townline Road. And to briefly summarize what they found, we just had this meeting earlier this week, for the east lot, the fix seems relatively easy. If you look at what, the first two pages of what I just passed around are actually on our website currently for Park Campus. So this is, these are the instructions that we have posted for how Park parents should access the building. And his opinion was if we changed our arrival procedures for that east lot, the right-hand side, to match the dismissal procedures, that should take pretty much all the cars off the road that are trying to access that east lot. So basically just making them go the entire exterior of the parking lot. In his opinion, he felt like just having cones or a staff member out there and having the consistency even for the parent of arrival is the same as dismissal. You go through the whole circle. He felt confident that that would be a safe way to get all the cars off the road. The trickier one was the west lot. You'll see even from these diagrams that the entryway is designed to have, you'll see from the two arrows, it's designed to double queue. And right now, he's had nobody's double queuing. It seems there's confusion when parents saw the signs, when they saw two lanes, they thought the right-hand side was one lane and the left-hand side was the second lane. So then you had parents trying to go in the out, and it was causing all sorts of nightmares. So his suggestion was, and that's what the third picture is, is just doing a little bit of restriping of those lines and some additional signage. And then also at the beginning of the year, just having a staff member out there to kind of help retrain parents, "This is how we do this." He felt like that would take off a majority of the issue. Unfortunately, he kept referencing the intersection of Gray Wall and Townline, which is just west of this. It's a four-way stop sign with crossing guards. And unfortunately, he said, "Just the way that that intersection is designed and the amount of traffic that tries to flow through there, as you have parents who are exiting out on there, you're, you're still going to have the backup just because of the stop sign." So he said, "Short of getting the village involved in some way to try to re, readdress that intersection", he didn't think there was much we could do internally. The one thing that we talked about that was new and interesting idea was we actually own a chunk of land right there where Gray Wall and Townline meet. That's part of the Parkland. And one thing he's going to continue looking at while we do this more cost-effective fix is he's going to look at what happens if we try to do an exit out on the Gray Wall instead of on the Townline. We brought that to his attention because he didn't know that we owned that chunk of land there, so he still wants to look at that and think that through. But that would be another option in the future if this, if this first suggestion doesn't resolve the west lot issue.
Gray Wall to the west of the lot, then? More towards Cedar Lake?
Yes. So that, that four-way intersection's Townline, and the north is Gray Wall. And I forget what the south road is. It's not Gray Wall.
Or in New Lane?
Yes.
So the, which part of, which chunk of land do we own there? Just the...
We own that corner.
Like that whole corner? Even south of that house there, so that's not...
Anything south of that house to Townline, we own.
It's an interesting option, please.
His initial response to that was, "You still have the issue with the stop signs. You're still going to have parents backing up, but at least they're not backing up on Townline. They're backing up in your drive, but..."
There appears to be a pedestrian path bisecting between the driveway and Gray Wall.
Yes.
Problematic.
There was talk about redirecting that walking path to follow along the exterior and go to, forgive me, I don't have the map up in front of me. There's another road that intersects Gray Wall just north of Townline and having, having a walkway right there. It wouldn't get rid of a lot of the student walkers, but it would keep the student walkers from having to go all the way down to Townline. Thank you. Yeah, Seaton. We could have a walkway there and have our exit come out near Seaton. And then that way, that might alleviate some of the walkers and some of the crossing guard standing at Townline Road and stopping traffic for that. But as I said, this was all new to him. He wasn't aware that this, that, that chunk of land on that corner there was ours. So I think that might open up new opportunities. But his encouragement was, especially since it's a relatively cost-effective solution, try to do it with just some, some parent engagement, some restriping and some signage and see if that, how that works.
So we're going to do the, try and do the easy, low-cost fix right now?
Correct.
You changing that?
And he's still going to continue to work on the, the exit to Gray Wall and see if there's, if that has any, if that's really a good option.
And what's the timing, John, for the reconfiguring?
He didn't give a timeline for it, but I can reach out to him tomorrow and see how much longer it would be.
I mean, for the, if we did this, what would be the timeline for it?
We could, especially for the east lot, we could do it as soon as the end of the week.
Right, because there's no actual restriping. It's just literally, just a new person here.
My recommendation might be to just wait until the beginning of the year, so it's a new, new year, new procedure, new process, so. And that'll give us a little bit of time over the summer to do the restriping we need to do on the west side and figure out some of the early-year staffing and cones and all the fun stuff to get it done that way.
Okay. New business, we have a discussion of new algebra and geometry curriculum. All in the main?
Yes, we're glad to speak about this. When we asked for the approval for the sixth through eighth grade math with Carnegie, we had mentioned that we were still working with a potential idea about looking for some resources for advanced-level courses for algebra and for geometry. So we had all of the, we actually had all of the teachers who teach algebra and geometry participate in looking at a variety of resources. We wanted something that would be a smooth transition from Carnegie into that advanced math class. We wanted a similar plan. I, I'm very honest to say that Carnegie will be having an algebra and a geometry program in the near future, but it will not be ready for this school year. So we put together this major impact form for our consideration for curriculum adoption. We know that the major impact form is typically for a larger dollar amount, but we wanted it as an approval that the board was seeing that these were curriculum materials that we were using. You will notice that it's a relatively small quote because it's for a very small group of students across the district who currently are in algebra or geometry. This is a company that we had webinar, we had conversations, we had, we had two finalists. So we were looking back and forth between the two programs, felt like this was the better solution at the time. Amanda, am I missing something? This is called Spring Board, and this is by the company that does college board admittance tests. And so they have a pretty big name. And so we felt like their questions and their background were strong. We are only asking for one year at the moment, partly because we were given very little benefit for going for multiple years. There wasn't much discount because we were buying so few. But also that if we, as we're getting, if we get through the year and we find out that Carnegie does come out with a better program or more closely matched, we don't want to be tied to a multi-year contract and can't get into the Carnegie. So that was our reasoning and thought. The algebra and geometry teachers are very happy to have a resource for them to be able to use. It is all digital, and so it will be similar to what the Carnegie experience is going to be. Printable and savable and, but for the seventh and eighth graders, sort of part of that class, they will already have had a year of the, a good portion of a year with the Chromebooks and the digital curriculum. So we're not concerned about that whole idea. So we wanted to bring this to you as another curriculum request. We're making progress to get resources to teachers. We still have some more areas to work on, but these are ones that we were able to handle right this moment. So what they do is they pull resources from a variety of sources is what we've been told, and they create their own packets. And so, and they're, well, we understand they might be different from teacher to teacher as well. And so they're finding resources. We did just this week have a good math artic, that was just last week. We had a math articulation with the high school and all of the feeder districts. And the outcome was we did ask for their scoping sequence, and we got that this week for algebra and for geometry. So we have a full list of all of their targets and their timeline for implementation so we can match that as well. Because these are really all of our students, and we want them to be successful when they go into a higher math class after they leave us, even though we don't give them high school credit for those as the high school would be giving them. They are going to much more advanced classes when they leave us from algebra. We want them to be successful. We want them to do well. They want, we want them to get right into those classes right away. So I'm glad that for the collaboration that we were able to, that was really good. We're glad to ask, answer any more questions. So we would ask for approval at the next meeting.
I have a question, just on the decision for, or just for the, was it purely reputation and experience or were there other elements to...
So some of those belief statements are... And we were looking for less drill-and-kill or just less of the more traditional math where there's just pages of problems. So we were looking for the problem solving, we were looking for group opportunities, we were looking for dialogue and discussion, we were looking for explanation, we were looking for some of those higher-order skills that honestly, that group of kids have the algorithms. They need more practice, like many of our students do. They need more practice in the discourse and the "how did I solve it?" and all of the explanation part. And we felt like there was opportunities in this program for that. So that was a good question.
Does it still contain some drill-and-kill?
Yes. There is, there's also practice opportunities. And so there are, that's just not the focus of the book, but there are supplementals to create additional practice problems for kids. And so there, there are still those. But one of our challenges that we discussed at the committee is if we give, give kids forty problems and they do forty problems wrong, they've just practiced too much and that becomes ingrained. And it's harder to break the, the error that they made because they'll always default back to that error. So there is, there is a catch-22 in the, in the practice. So they, they have to have the correct practice. It has to be effective practice to get to that, too.
And then are there materials for parents to help their kids?
I believe that each section is bound with a clearing letter.
Especially since it's electronic-based to make the equation easy for parents to...
The parents can also run to the student portal and they can see the video to video that the student has seen. They can see how much they're going, so they can read that.
All can be integrated into Google Classroom, which is our management system, so Google Classroom. And so parents have the option to get into their class, their Google Classroom as well. So all those things are evident, but they... Um, but they did like that there were short tutorials, um, to show the student, but the parent could also, obviously, I know I need those sometimes, when I get those kind of questions at home, just for refresher.
Or even understanding, so what did you study today? And why did your kids...
Exactly.
I was like teaching completely different than how we learned.
Yeah.
That's a, that's, that's my struggle.
That's your, you'll take for new, kind of, you stop and stack it up the same way?
So it depends when it becomes available. Um, they say a date, and so we will hope for that date, but, um, we're not sure. Um, they are, um, a very quality program, and they don't rush. And so, I like the idea that they don't rush, they're doing it well, um, but it does make us wait, and so that's the hard part.
Are they including any of the math anxiety research that Joe Bowler's doing? Their math, their mindset or...
Well, Joe Bowler is, Joe Bowler is one of the people that the math teachers talk about regularly, so that's not an unfamiliar name. Um, I don't know if the program specifically, because I think he's specifically tied to one...
Yeah.
I had to get to the website.
Sorry.
She, um, I don't, I don't even know what's that, I just know of the person. Um, but they, I think she's connected to a certain publisher.
Ah, okay.
And so, I think they, um, they've, uh, many of the math teachers have taken multiple courses, um, that are, that are produced, and so, they talk about that a lot.
She's out of Stanford, and she does this amazing course.
About mindful math work, and...
Yeah, it's, it's for math educators, but it talks about, about half of the country has math anxiety, and so it's how, what instructional techniques...
And part of that is that sometimes parents, um, consciously or unconsciously share that, when they say, I'm not a math person, or I was never good at math too, and so then that's carried on, well, our family must not be good at math, and so there is even some generational issues with that. So that's a, something we wanna help parents stop, um, or else at least say, I wasn't good at, I'm not good at math yet, but this is what I'm doing. That's a Carol Dweck, uh, phrase about mindful and growth mindset. So, we're glad that, um, to share this information. Um, again, this was not a decision of the curriculum office, this was a request, um, and a decision by the entire math department, who teaches it, so, a good thing.
Uh, back up to you for topics of future agenda.
So, I had a few things, so a first look at the budget, cause my understanding is that, that's part of it. Um, I added approval of the algebra and geometry, the thing we just talked about, and then later down, I wrote June or July, the, um, our presentation, um, but I'm ready for any other topics.
One other one from the business office is, uh, the need to transfer funds from the working cash fund to the capital projects fund to finish paying off the solo project. It's just where the developer donations were originally deposited, so, trying to move the money around to make the payments that we can out of the correct funds.
Do you enjoy that, do I, uh, tech update, just how the first year went and lessons learned for next year?
Yeah, I was, I'm looking for feedback with technology and suggestions for improvements in what our next steps are, for next year. So, I know we kinda threw it at them at the midway point of this year, and we wanted to get as much time with those as possible, so next year can, we can just improve as we go along.
We're glad to share some of those things. We recently did a survey, um, and so we have some survey information that we've already are planning to take action on the opening institute days about. Um, one of the things that teachers have access to is a program called Kami. Um, your children might be talking about Kami. Um, it's a way for, um, students and teachers to edit PDFs, and so, um, the teachers have said they are thrilled about it, um, but they want the next level training, and so that's what we're already planning for our upper grades for Kami. You might be interested even to see what Kami is yourself, cause it's, it's an amazing tool.
Can we, including that, some feedback from maybe parents and some students, so that we get their perspective on how, what they might wanna see in the future as far as the technology in the, in the district goes? Um, and it's not just, I'm sure the teachers all have a lot of insights on what they need to change and, and works well and not, but, you know, some of the students and parents would have some, might have concerns and stuff like that.
We will do our best in the number of days left to get...
Yeah, even if it's, um, I assume you have, I assume we have a, some sort of a database of emails for parents, that, you know, just to do an email survey with the parents? Quick survey with them on, it doesn't, I mean, they don't have to necessarily come in. Yeah, I know you have a limited time with the students, so maybe that won't help, but I'm sure, I'm gonna guess there are probably a lot of parents that have some opinions on how things went.
Some of the principals have been getting, I apologize for interrupting you, um, some of our principals have also been getting information about the turning off of the internet, um, at, at ten, um, and so generally, that feedback has been very positive. So, of the people who've been in contact, we've had a few, and so we, we already talked about that just last, it's on Tuesday, um, at our leadership team meeting, about some modifications or thoughts about it. But we do, we have been working on it.
I was just gonna say, I think a stakeholder we, we found out about when our son went to the after-school program in his Chromebook, and they were, oh, okay. So, I don't know, that's a stakeholder we've been, they might wanna take a look at, is there any education proactively saying here, that might be some guidelines that an after-school program could put into place for those students? Because when I go into my, my son's report, it's, there's at least four other students there with the Chromebooks, um, so, and it, I mean, it's all good, but I think they would probably, it would be nice to give them any guidance or lessons learned that you guys have, so that the use of them there is productive as well.
We will say that, um, the principal feedback about Go Guardian has also been very positive, um, because we have identified some students who might need some additional support or help, um, that we would not have known. The principals said that that's maybe the best part of it so far, so you might like to hear more about that as well.
Any other topics? Sorry. Keep it to it. Okay. And we don't have a reason for a closed, right? Nope. Okay. Um, any more public comments? Nope, okay. And we do not have a need for a closed session, so next is a motion to adjourn. So move.
Aye.
Mackey? Miller?
All right, can I just ask you a question, James? Were we supposed to go over board agreements, or not?
We approved the board of things.
Okay. There was nothing more about that? Okay, aye.
Yeah, sorry.
Just wanted to make sure.
Strack?
Aye.
Wheatman? Grady?
Aye.
What does that mean? I don't think I've ever heard that before.
Because they saw, it's not like it's...
Yeah.
I think we're about children's safety, here, we're wrapping up, is this a common idea?